October ninth, two thousand and two, and I was not present. Mr. Caffrey, would you take over on that item while I abstain?
Mr. Chairman, okay, so we're calling for a motion on the approval of the minutes for October ninth, two thousand and two.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a approval of the minutes by Ms. Morantz, second by Mr. Schoenberger, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We have October twenty-third, two thousand and two. Any additions or corrections?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the minutes of October twenty-three, two thousand and two.
Very good. Is there a second?
I have to abstain.
Okay, motion by Mr. Schoenberger, second by Ms. Morantz, and we have an abstention by Mr. Caffrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously with that one abstention. First item on the agenda was to be a closed session. Mr. Evans, can you bring us up to date on that, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, subsequent to the posting of the agenda, that was easy for me to say, the need for the closed session today has gone away. The purpose of the closed session was a threatened litigation situation. There's no need to have a closed session. Mr. Chairman, since it's on the agenda, you probably do need to open public comments on the closed session item only, and there's no need to adjourn. Then you could move on to the rest of your agenda, sir.
Thank you. Now's the time for public comment strictly on the closed session item. There'll be separate public comments with regard to our regular meeting. Anybody wishing to address us with regard to the closed session item, please come forward at this time.
What was it?
Seeing none, we'll close the public comment with regard to the closed session item. Okay, now is the time for public comments. Anybody wishing to address the Commission on Plating Matters in the City of Palm Springs may come forward at this time. Please give us your name, sign the clipboard, and we do ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Ma'am, did you want to comment?
Just signing your name?
Well, if you... Sure.
There's several names on here.
All right.
Okay.
Could you give us your name, sir, please?
Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Van Etten. I live at thirteen-seventy-nine Barrymore Place here in Palm Springs. Good afternoon, Mr. Evans and staff, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Within the next couple of months, you will be asked to authorize the Desert AIDS Project Vista Sunrise Human Services Campus. Part of that proposed campus would include a homeless daycare center. I am one of the many residents in and around the Vista Chino Sunrise area who are concerned about a homeless daycare center coming into our midst. There is Raymond Cree Middle School close by, a senior citizens center close by, and residential areas. We feel that if a homeless daycare center is allowed to be part of this project, the old adage will hold true, build it and they will come. What is being proposed for the homeless is a thirty-five-hundred-square-foot building wherein people would be fed two meals a day, given internet access, showers, laundry facilities, local phone service, and counseling. Can you imagine the professional homeless person viewing of this potential goldmine? Can you also imagine, if you will, the dangers of bringing in homeless individuals with mental instability who may not be taking their medications or refusing to take their medications, and the danger that might be posed to schoolchildren, elderly, and other residents? I urge you, Mr. Evans and Commissioners, to look carefully at this proposal when it is brought before you and take into consideration the valid concerns of the residents in and around the Desert AIDS Project campus. We feel strongly that this is being forced down our throats, and we look to you to hear our collective voices of utter disapproval of this portion of the campus. I ask those who are here with me to stand and be recognized as opposing the homeless daycare center. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and the Commission notices the strength in the audience. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Bridgette Zawida, and I reside at twelve-one-nine Verdugo Road in Palm Springs, and I'm also here opposing the Vista Sunrise Project for the homeless daycare center. And my points are that the city, as it looks like, and the rest of Palm Springs, are in the process of renovating and revitalizing the North End Shopping District. New shops are going in. Everything is looking wonderful. The city also recently approved a new visitor center that they bought in the amount of six hundred thousand plus. That's very close by. And this proposed move to install a homeless daycare center will open the floodgates to additional transients into the area, and thereby we would be taking a step backward instead of a forward momentum. A mixture of working class full-time and seasonal retired seniors live in the community, which also includes two schools and rehab centers. And I ask you do not impair the tranquility and safekeeping of the senior community and that of hard-working families that are all tax-paying, peaceful neighbors for the benefit of a few. It would not be the majority. The seniors and children in our community depend on walking to and from shopping and exercise, and we have beautiful sidewalks for exactly that purpose. Please do not ruin it for those that utilize the streets daily. If federal fundings are the driving force for the homeless task force, then they should gear their efforts into a different direction to perhaps establish a subsidized daycare center for the children whose parents need to work and who could use the break for such childcare. And it also will enable them to make ends meet, especially those already struggling and living in subsidized housing and who are struggling to stay above water. And most importantly, if the proposal that they are putting before us, they will be busing people, homeless people, to this daycare center, and perhaps they should look at those funds utilizing in a different direction and maybe establishing several meal sites around the area or in the Coachella Valley and not bus the people there for the homeless daycare meals. They have no place to go. There is no shelter close by. They will be camping out in the parking lots, in the shopping center malls, and the valley doesn't need that. We need to establish something that will be safe for everybody, and I'm not saying that the homeless don't deserve a break. They do, but I don't think concentrating them in the North End is the best, in the best interest of Palm Springs or the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Shirley Moore. I am the president of Ranch Club Estates. Our complex is immediately adjacent to part of this proposed project. We have experienced in the past the homeless people using our Jacuzzis, our pools, and our facilities, jumping over our walls, urinating against the walls, taking a shower with our hoses and so forth. We do not want any more of that in our area. We feel that it would have a very negative impact on the entire area, the property values, the safety, and the general welfare of the people in the community would be affected. The two speakers ahead of me have already mentioned many of the other things I wish to mention. We feel that the people that it would attract would be dangerous and unstable. We know that there is a need for this type of facility, but we think the proposed location is very inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
My name is Margot Hertz. I live at Ranch Club, fourteen-one-nine North Sunrise. I had a letter to the editor published in Sunday's opinion page, and I'm just going to read you that because it states my point. There was an article in, on November thirtieth, in the local section that said that the proposed homeless center, Vista Chino and Sunrise Way in Palm Springs, said that some homeowners near the proposed campus are concerned, and I think this is a gross understatement. Most of us who live in closest proximity to this site are alarmed, frightened, and furious. A lot of us are senior citizens who came to this wonderful city to spend our retirement years in peace and tranquility after having paid our dues to society and other places. We are taxpayers and voters, and in a democracy, voters rule. We will do anything and everything within our means to fight this proposed project, including picketing and demonstrating if necessary. We cannot afford to have our property values go down, and we will not be forced to live in fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hertz.
Thank you for allowing us to have this public comment period. My name is Paula Auburn. I live at thirteen-sixty-nine Campion Circle, and my husband and I are new residents in the area, and we feel like we've kind of dropped in on the second act of a three-act play today, not having some of the history of what's gone into this. So I'll try to keep a couple of my questions fairly brief as a latecomer to a discussion of this process. One of the earlier speakers said that the homeless in that do need support and they do need services, and I think my husband and I agree that that is true. We are concerned about the creation of a critical mass at a location which is in a residential area. We happen to live in the summertime in a community which has one of the national models for homeless centers. It has been looked at by the federal government, and many, many different communities come in to take a look at what they have done there. It is not, however, in a residential area, nor close to a residential area. It was not put in a residential area because of some of the concerns of what it would do to neighborhoods and some of the safety and security issues. My two specific questions would come from, I noticed that McCormick, Baron, and Salazar are going to be the developer, excuse me, as well as the property manager. Since I'm new to this area, I don't know their reputation nor their history. I noticed in the fact sheet that they have twenty years, twenty-eight years of experience in twenty-four cities. I'm hopeful that somewhere in the record there has been a reputation check on this company and that those developments in those cities have, over the long run, not the short run, while they're new and pretty, but over the long run, have kept the aesthetic value and the property values up, and that this developer does in fact follow through on all the promises, because lip service and promises up front are very easy to make and sometime more difficult to live up to over the long term. Second, Desert Regional Medical Center is only about a half a mile or a mile down the road, and I'm surprised that they are not part of this project, and I'm also surprised that some of the healthcare services are not being looked at to be delivered from that particular healthcare campus, which is already in existence. So it seems that we're duplicating effort and probably with tax dollars. And so I was curious about why they were not a partner in this and why we're not using already existing services and expanding on those. Finally, because in a process like this, you've got some difficult decision-making to do, if this project does go forward, I would ask that there will be opportunities for discussion and mediation of some of the issues that as neighbors we've brought to the table, and that it not be just a done deal without coming back and trying to work out some safeguards and some addressing of some of the concerns that you've heard us raise here today. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody else that wishes to address us, please come forward?
Hello, my name is Todd Sand, and I live here in Palm Springs, a new residence. I am at thirteen-forty-six Barrymore Place, and I also realize that as a society and as a city and so on, that we do have an obligation to, to take care of people who are on the streets. I don't know what the answer is, but I just feel really strongly that, and I hesitate to say it in such a way, because if I were hearing the argument made from someone else, it would almost seem hypocritical, and maybe it is. I don't know. I don't want it in my backyard. And I think that kind of summarizes it, and I think in reality, if all of us, I mean, anybody on the panel, anyone else in the room who also realizes that we need the services, I think, I don't know where you folks live, but my gut feeling is that you also would not want that in your backyard for a variety of reasons. One of my main concerns, I don't have kids, so I'm not going to use that as an argument, although I do think that as a member of society, of course, I want kids to be safe and so on. My property values, I think, are really, are my main concern, and maybe that's totally selfish and maybe out of line, maybe, maybe I'm hypocrite for, for looking at it that way, but I think really, if all of us look at it, you know, I think we would all ultimately have to agree that, that that's a legitimate concern. And again, I think we have an obligation, but I just hope that we can go somewhere else with it. And my understanding is that there have been tasks for, task forces that have really looked hard and, and long at the, at the options that the city has, and for whatever reason feel that this is a good, a good possibility. I just really hope that, that we can come up with another possibility for it. I don't want it in my neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sand. Will you please sign the clipboard before you leave? Does anybody else that would like to address us? Anybody that wishes to speak in succession, please come up as one person leaves. You don't have to wait to be invited up.
My name is Diane Giraud. I live at eighteen-sixty-one Pasail Palota in the Sunrise Racquet Club. I'm really severely concerned about this project that's proposed to go in at the corner of Sunrise and Vista Chino. Traffic was one of the main issues here. I don't know if a traffic study's been done on this project. There would probably have to be severe traffic reconfiguration at this area, since this is already the most dangerous intersection in the city. I don't think a residential area is, is something to do with the homeless daycare center. It, it, it could be better in another area. There are other areas in the city I think that would be a better location for this project. Also, I agree with the speaker that was here before. I think that the Desert Regional Medical Center could provide some of the services for these people as well. It's, the residential area here is, is strongly opposed. Sunrise Way is a major north, north and south arterial. The project is going to become very visible to people traveling up this, up on Sunrise Way into the city. More and more people are using Sunrise Way as a major thoroughfare. And you may want to check with the City of Santa Monica and see how they feel about the homeless. They started the project there, feeding the homeless. Now they're trying to get rid of them, make them go away. It's a difficult situation, and it's a, the City of Palm Springs has made great strides in the last few years in getting people back to the city, businesses, people who want to live here full-time. I would hate to see the city make a big, giant backward step by allowing this project to go forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
My name is Phelps Fisher, and I live adjacent to this location of the proposed homeless daycare center. We are absolutely scared to death. You can't imagine. We, about three years ago, made a determination that Palm Springs itself, we've owned our home since nineteen eighty-seven, and we've been here as guests when we could take vacation time, then we made a determination that Palm Springs was going to be our place of retirement as of October first, nineteen ninety-nine. And we then looked around at Rancho Mirage and a lot of other communities to see if we wanted to change locations and have something a little bigger or whatever it might be, and we decided, you know, this is a very nice place, and we decided to stay in Palm Springs, only to find in the mail that Palm Springs and its wisdom was going to place a homeless daycare center immediately adjacent to our property. We're scared to death. We can visualize the homeless agitating, coming over our balconies, using our chairs, defecating and urinating in our yards, harassing us. We're not willing to have our grandchildren stay with us. I'm afraid to go back to Seattle to do some business occasionally and leave my wife alone. We are absolutely living in terror as a result of your wanting to put a homeless daycare center immediately adjacent to our residence. It's just not the appropriate place to put a homeless daycare center. We know the police chief, the parks people, the Chamber of Commerce, and all of those who served on the homeless task force were determined to move the problem from their constituency to someone else's. And the someone else's happens to be about a thousand of us who lives adjacent to this particular location, a few hundred feet in the case of those of us at Ranch Club, a hundred and twelve units, most of us older, with grandchildren and children coming to visit, and it's just not a safe environment for us to live in. We hope you won't do it.
Thank you. Does anybody else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comments. Now past two o'clock, so we'll go to our public hearing items. First item on calendar is the application by the Agua Caliente Development Authority for a general plan amendment, et cetera, and I'm not going to read the entire matter, but I've been advised that you're suggesting that this matter be continued because of lack of a quorum.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've briefed the Commission before on this. We need all of the Commissioners that do not have a conflict to be here in order to draw straws, to create a quorum. Commissioner Grin says somewhere between the mainland and Hawaii on a very large boat, so we couldn't get him here. We tried a number of ways, but they just wouldn't move him that quick. So we're going to recommend that you just continue this to special meeting on December seventeenth, and we've sent out a courtesy notice to everybody within four hundred feet of this particular item, so that they're aware of the change of the schedule. And if anybody is here and has questions about that, we can certainly answer. So this item will be continued to December seventeenth.
Thank you, Ms. Giraud. Is it required that we open public hearing?
You can't hear as a hearing body. You don't have a quorum, so there's no action.
Okay, so we don't even have to have a motion or anything?
No motion. You, all you can do is listen to the explanation, and hopefully we didn't inconvenience too many people with regards to this change.
Very good. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to clarify for those that might be watching on TV, that's a gray boat, not a cruise ship.
Yes, yes. He's on a military vessel at this point, and we did see if we could get him on a jet, but they, they couldn't arrange that, and the black helicopters won't make it this far. We, we, we did ask.
Thanks, Mr. Caffrey. The, the trip is not just as a leisure, that's right. It's not a fun trip. Next item on the agenda, number five, case five-point-oh-eight-eight-nine, application by the Burnett Companies for preliminary plan development district and tentative tract map three-zero-zero-five-eight for the subdivision of forty-six-point-two-acre parcel into one-hundred-seventy-six single-family residence with maximum lot size of five, excuse me, fifty-five-hundred-and-seventy-seven-hundred square feet within a gated community located at thirty-eight-oh-one Sunrise Way North. Staff report, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commission. The item before you is a companion project to a project you viewed about one year ago that is proposed on the east side of Sunrise Way. The project before you today, as the Chairman noted, is a hundred and seventy-six lots on forty-six acres with common area amenities, including pool, spa, recreation areas, some onsite retention, and active and passive recreation areas as well. The subdivision would include two types of lots, some lots measuring approximately fifty by a hundred and five, the other set measuring about seventy by a hundred and ten, two different types of lots for two different types of production housing. The setbacks as part of this planned development district would provide for five-foot front setbacks when you have a side entry garage, and otherwise it would be a twenty-foot front yard setback, five-foot side yards, and fifteen-foot rear yard setbacks. The general plan designation for this area provides for kind of a unique development pattern. The CDL, or Controlled Density Eight, allows up to eight dwelling units per acre in the event that there is an affordability component to the residential product. In the instances like this where there is no affordability in relationship to a subsidy directly granted by the city or state sources, you're limited to a maximum of four dwelling units per acre. The proposed density of this project is three-point-eight dwelling units per acre, so it's, it's in line with the, the underlying zoning of the R-one-C, pretty standard for the area. In terms of other unique aspects of the planned development district, you'll note that there is no architecture proposed at this time. Rather, there's a desire to subdivide and provide the opportunity for future, future merchant builders onsite. In terms of the product itself that we could anticipate, up to twenty-five percent of the units could potentially be two-story, and I will approach the boards in a minute to show you the location of these units. In, in consideration of the existing land use and patterns in the area, we were concerned that a two-story may not be appropriate adjacent to one-story development that exists on the south and east and west side. So we have included a provision in the conditions which would restrict any two-story residences from being located within two-hundred feet of the project perimeter, and I'll also show you that on the map in a moment. With these two stories, essentially when you exclude the two-hundred-foot perimeter, it would leave approximately fifty-five lots on which you could build two-story residences. However, twenty-five percent of a hundred and seventy-six is forty-four, so the maximum number of lots would be a hundred, would be forty-four lots for two-story development. Traffic calming has been proposed as part of this project, and I will also point those areas out, similar to the chokers that you may recall on the earlier project by the Burnett Companies across the street. I would also like to call your attention to engineering condition one hundred, which requires the developer to install a traffic signal at the intersection of Sunrise and San Rafael, and this would be installed prior to issuance of the certificate of occupancy on the fiftieth unit. So it's essentially a quarter of the way through the project, we could see a traffic signal at that intersection. That condition is also a requirement of the earlier map on the east side of Sunrise, so it's kind of a who gets there first type of condition. In terms of the related project and this project, there was a discussion at the time of the Planning Commission hearing last year on whether the streets should be public or private, and there was some debate at the Planning Commission on that issue. As you may recall, we left it, there was not a quorum or there was not a majority that was willing to require the streets to be open, so that was left to the consideration of the developer. As proposed here, the streets are gated, and it is part of their development program to include a closed community or gated community. The project has two access points, however, only one of them would be open to the public, direct access to Sunrise Way in a gated fashion with a turnaround and landscaping, kind of a high-quality entry features. A second access point would be emergency access only and would be gated with Knox locks and provided for use solely by fire and police services in the event of an emergency. The lots as designed would feature units from sixteen-hundred-and-fifty to twenty-seven-hundred square feet. These can be accommodated on these size lots, and I can walk you through that on the typical plotting that's posted before us. In terms of the project and the environmental review, notice was sent to over two-hundred of the adjoining property owners within the vicinity of this project. We, we used the four-hundred-foot radius as the baseline, but some of the condominiums in the area, a portion of it was within four-hundred feet that we sent to everyone, noticed to everyone within those communities. So there are people that were five or six or seven-hundred feet away that did receive notice, but we just wanted to make sure that everything was, was taken care of and that we did a good job in terms of public notification. In terms of the environmental review on this project, there was a mitigated negative declaration prepared as part of the environmental assessment and initial study. It was sent to a number of state agencies. The public comment period was November eighteenth through December ninth. We don't have any comment yet. In terms of the public response to the noticing that we've sent out, we did have approximately eight phone calls, and three people visited the project, the planners at the counter, and showed on the map and discussed the project. The main concern was a provision of affordable housing, and we did explain that there is no relationship or subsidy being provided by the city or anticipated to be provided by the city at this time, and there seemed to be no additional concerns. In the meanwhile, we have In the meanwhile, we haven't received any correspondence from neighbors or surrounding property owners. There may be some in attendance today, but people seem to kind of be welcoming this project for a number of reasons, including that it would reduce the amount of fugitive dust blowing across the property into their respective yards. What I'd like to do is approach the board, kind of walk you through the project briefly, and then answer any questions you may have. The applicant is present, Jason Lee from the Burnett Companies, and he's available to answer any questions that you may have. I did discuss the conditions of approval with him briefly yesterday, and he did have a question about landscaping in the front, rear, and side yards, and he was concerned that maybe this would be onerous or a burden for future developers that they were looking to market the site to, but I did remind him that last year the planning commission did discuss this issue, and that project was conditioned to provide rear, side, and front yard landscaping. So we think that that condition would be consistent with past practice in the area and will provide for a higher level of development when the project is built out. I'll approach the boards now. For orientation purposes, we have Sunrise Way, and San Rafael is to the south of this. The existing Coyote Run project is here. The proposed Coyote Run Phase Two would be right in this location. Existing Mobile Home Park is here. Existing residential plan development is located in this area to here. There's approximately six residences back up to ten on the inside of the site. And then we have open desert both to the north and to the northwest in this area. In terms of access, again, Sunrise is the primary access, and a secondary emergency access would be provided through the Mobile Home Park. The entryway is blown up here in detail, gates would be right here. As part of the final plan development district, we'll bring back the gates and those types of fine level details to you. In terms of the lotting and plotting of residences with the proposed setbacks, this exhibit shows essentially these units can be plotted on the larger, and these units can be plotted on the smaller lots, still meeting the setback criteria. Again, they're asking for a five-foot front yard setback, which is kind of a smaller lot subdivision. A five-foot front yard setback would be in those instances where you had a garage with a side-level entry. In terms of the amenities, they're talking about this larger amenity, kind of right the termination of the Collector Street here. You see, you would have a pool and a spa area, restrooms and mechanical area, but there's no common area amenity of a clubhouse or such. The applicant is confident that this is going to meet the needs of this community. I would like to briefly address the fact that the general plan designation for this area under the CDL eight was anticipated to be created, or it was created to provide for a higher level of density in this area, and this is, you know, at the lower ranges that's permissible. When the designation, the higher level designation in general plan and density was created, it was anticipated that the Mobile Home Park would extend some distance up to about here. At that time, the redevelopment agency did purchase a portion of this site. In the meantime, it's been decided that maybe an expansion of that Mobile Home Park isn't the highest and best use, and that maybe providing ownership at an entry level would be a better use for that land. So as part of the environmental review, but not for consideration today, the proposed disposition and development agreement between the redevelopment agency and the applicant for the provision of this land was also included in the analysis. Be happy to answer any questions you may have, and the applicant's present. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Any questions of staff? Yes.
I just have one. You mentioned you were talking about the traffic calming. Where in the facility are you talking about?
I overlooked that portion of my presentation. There's a couple of things. When you drive to this area, doesn't show on this exhibit, but there's essentially colored decorative concrete right here that kind of tells you to slow down. It's a different change in texture and color. First kind of traffic circles here, then we have these chokers that would be proposed here and here, essentially narrowing the right-of-way down to, I think, twenty-four feet, and then another traffic circle here, kind of slowing you at the intersection. The design team and engineering department wanted to see something to really slow and moderate traffic in these areas. It was concerned that these are kind of long stretches, could be a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Caffrey, is your call?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alex, on that issue that I brought up last week at the study session, is it going to be ten lots behind the six homes, or is it going to be six, seven lots behind the ten, six homes?
The six homes that exist down here off-site are backed up by these ten lots onsite.
Okay, is that the new, is that the current configuration, or is it one above it?
This is the current configuration.
Okay.
So they're all in a back-to-back condition. This exhibit is just for landscape purposes only, and to show the difference in the smaller lots, which are in the olive, and the larger lots, which are in the pale green.
And we only have the clusters for the cul-de-sacs, and was there a reason we didn't get the homes that are going to be on the streets in a configuration?
We were confident that with this lot configuration, that you could actually lay them all out this ways.
So on the straight streets, we're just going to take those in rows, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Schomburger?
Alex, I'm going to bring up a familiar theme, and you may not want to comment on it, you may want to let the developer comment on it, but I made the same comments on the companion project, and there were some different situations on the companion project in that there was a golf course border and a drainage, large drainage ditch, and so on. But again, we're seeing here a walled and gated community going into what will be a residential neighborhood, and as I've commented before, I think that's incompatible with really our Palm Springs neighborhoods, and I have kind of a fear that in this particular area, we have already, there are already a number of projects that were approved before I ever got on the planning commission, where we had walls and gates, and so, you know, this seems to be extending that policy further. And I guess my question is whether there are any particularly unique features about this site that argue in favor of a walled and gated community as opposed to one that would blend into the neighborhood better, or is this just something that the developer wants for marketing purposes and feels that it's going to help him from that aspect?
Well, clearly, it is a policy question, and you're correct in your assertion that this does lack some of the geographic characteristics that may have made sense for the earlier site. The applicant has essentially bundled these entitlements, or is intending to bundle these entitlements together and work with a builder to kind of build it out simultaneously. I would like to invite the applicant to speak to that issue, because I think it's important that they share their vision with you.
Thank you.
Anything further? Alex, I have a question. You commented that with the companion project, we required landscaping all around to maintain the higher level. In that project, we also had representative elevations, and we were pretty emphatic that we wanted the high degree of detail and quality that we saw in those elevations because of the small lot sizes and the short setbacks. Does the, has the developer committed to that type of development on this project? I know we don't have those representative elevations, but that level of quality?
That will be a requirement, and that's exactly why we didn't bring the elevations back to you. That's part of the final plan development district, and we do intend to see that and bring that back to you at a time that it's appropriate, but they don't have that level of design available at this time.
Seeing no further questions, then I'll open the public hearing on this matter. Anybody wishing to address us, including the applicant, please come forward at this time. Please give us your name and sign the clipboard before you leave.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Jason Lee, I'm with the Developer Burnett Development. I wanted to address several of your questions that I knew Alex was giving you some comment on. The first comment was about the differences between the two maps. We had, the bottom map is the current map, the tentative map that we've revised. We hadn't revised the landscape plan, and there are ten lots adjacent to those southern, southwest corner lots, so that is true. The upper map just showed a sort of a concept of a landscape that was set on the original tentative map that we had, but we've made revisions since that time, working with engineering and planning. The reason for the plotting in the cul-de-sacs only, we wanted to show the most extreme case. You can see on the landscape map the two different shades of green, those shows the two lot sizes, so we plotted in that area typical lot configuration. With the option, your concern about having almost the same depth and maybe rows and rows of houses along our street, what we've tried to do is add the option to have side guard garages, so that you would have indentations of yards, you'd have a five-foot setback to the front, to the side yard garage, and then you'd have normal houses setback. So we have that option in all the different houses, and we've tried to show that, not only in the cul-de-sacs, but that'll be available along some of the long stretches that we have. Based on the site plan that we have, we've got a square tract, and we're inevitably going to have long streets, and that's why we've been working with engineering on our traffic calming. And also concerned about the front view, and as you drive down these boulevards, you'll be able to see, you know, setbacks and variations of house frontages and elevations as well. You notice on some of the streets, we do have blends of both the large lots and the smaller lots, so you'll have not only elevation differences, but lot size difference also. The question about the gating, this originally, and we had approved the east side with the option to be able to make that decision at our choice, and agreed that we wanted to bring that up as a discussion point, because it was for a marketing reason at that time. We wanted, our vision was that we would have two gated communities back-to-back and have that whole gated entry theme, and it was a marketing issue only. We don't have anything that stands out, anything above and beyond, we don't have any great views that we want to keep people out of, or give it, the idea is to give it a sense of neighborhood, a sense of entry, and match the other side that we were anticipating putting as gated community. Since that time, we've been in negotiations to make this a second phase of an active adult master plan, including acquiring a later piece to make it five hundred lots total, and the idea is to keep that, that I hope would give you the sense that we would be able to have a gated community in this area, a true reason why, besides a marketing reason, but to have it as a five hundred lot master plan and have a gated community in this area. Sort of, that's what's evolved since that time. Originally, it was for marketing reasons. And in relation to the architecture, yes, we had originally some architecture that we had plotted as a concept to design the lots to, and to come up with our setbacks, basically footprint architecture. Since that time, we've come and we've had active adult conversations, and so the architecture's really up in there, and we prefer, like Alex has said, to bring it back to you when we know what we're actually, when it is actually going to be built on this project, and run that through an approval process at that time. Rather than trying to conglute it with something that is really vague and not be able to pin it down, we'd rather come back with the actual product. So that's the reason for the architecture. Otherwise, I'm here to answer any of your questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. When we close the public hearing, there may be some questions. Does anybody else that wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward?
My name is Colin Spring, and I live in Vintage Palms, which is to the west of this development. I have a couple of questions, maybe my hearing is not so good, so maybe I didn't catch it. First of all, am I right in thinking that on the upper right diagram, the darker shade is the high-density, the higher-density area? I'm wondering of the wisdom of that in view of the fact that the left-hand side, in other words, the west side of that which would back onto Vintage Palms, would be on, backing onto properties which are at a lower density. So the people that actually own land in Vintage Palms would find themselves looking out on a high-density area, which I think, though I'm not one of them, I speak on their behalf, I think they would have preferred, if a new development was to go on, that the less-dense area would not be immediately behind them, so that people purchasing land around this property at a later date would already know what was in store for them. The second question I have is that I don't know, I don't think it has been mentioned, which is the exact area where the two-story buildings will be built? That also is something that would concern people in Vintage Palms, which is all one-story, and obviously with a six-foot fence or whatever it happened, wall, they still would be concerned about being overlooked. So could you please point out that area?
Yeah, Mr. Spring, we appreciate your comment. The question's, not a question and answer, but after the close of the public hearing, perhaps we'll have, be able to supply some response. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Before we get further comments from Commissioners, Alex, perhaps you can respond to that last question. I know this was pretty well discussed during our study session about the location of the two-story units, and perhaps the public would like to have some more information on that regard.
I'd be happy to answer the question, and it may help to approach the boards and kind of walk you through that discussion.
Please.
In terms of the relationship Mr. Spring mentioned, these are the smaller lots? In terms of the question of the two-story location, from, our recommendation was, and the condition is structured, so that there would be a two-hundred-foot separation from project boundary. So lightly in pencil, you can see the lines been drawn here, and here, and here, here, and also right here, that would essentially, there would be no two-story within this segment. So it's next to the apartments, it's basically this entire row of houses, and then some residences on the north side of the street as well, and then by the time you're back here, these residences are also within two hundred feet of future development to the north, so really nothing in this area. These lots and these lots on this side are within two hundred feet of the Coyote Run Apartments, so you wouldn't see the two-story here. These lots, and then everything on the north side of the street is also within two hundred feet of the Mobile Home Park, you wouldn't have the ability to do a two-story there. Then also, lots on both sides of this street are within two hundred feet of this area. So the remainder is within this square here, essentially the core of the project. We figured out it equals fifty-five lots, which would have the ability to go to two-story. If they're marketed to a senior community, there's probably even less demand likely for a two-story, but it is part of the PD request, and therefore something that was considered. One other point I'd like to bring out to you, it's on the Vintage Palm side, the existing pad heights are one to four feet above those proposed here, so they'd essentially be looking down upon, the differences are magnified in this area, but the difference here is one, the difference here is about two, about three, and about four feet below, so they'd essentially be looking down on the units that would be proposed as part of this development. But we did work with the applicant on pad elevations in terms of having good relationships.
Thank you, Alex. Ms. Marantz?
Yeah, just to clarify that, in your opening presentation, in fact, I wrote it down, that you had said that only forty-four lots would be utilized as two-story.
Thank you.
And where'd the fifty-five come from?
Fifty-five are the lots that would be available
Okay.
for two-story. Forty-four is the maximum using a twenty-five percent ratio that's requested and allowed, maximum allowed by general plan.
Okay, thank you.
This comment?
Chairman, I apologize to Mr. Lee for not asking
And I apologize to Mr. Lee for not asking this at the study session last week, but I don't know why it didn't dawn on me, and maybe I could have the city engineer talk to us about the configuration of the streets. And I don't think we talked about traffic calming at the study session, it's why maybe I didn't think of it. The streets are long, and is there a lot of wisdom to not having them make a complete loop, especially for some of the most northwest homes? I mean, that's a really long drive inside there, and I'd like to see what the city engineer thinks about that.
Mr. Lee, would you like to come forward and respond, if you?
We originally had a, because we have almost a rectangle in that area, we originally had a pure grid pattern with, with four legs to it, to match the perimeter of the project. What we want to do is break it up, that centerpiece of the project, by adding that sort of leg that comes out from the middle of the west side, where we have the traffic circle. So we, we tried to break up the center of the project, because we had almost like a standard grid pattern to a project, where we would have, definitely have long strips of street. Inevitably, I ended up with one section, which is that upper northwest section, where I, I wasn't able to get any access to it, because I put that slope there, and we, we ran the street down to the south instead. So we, we took that into account, and we worked with the city engineer. That was why, there were several versions of this tentative map that we've gone through, and that, sort of why the, the landscape map doesn't quite match the, the new tentative map, because we've been making future, final changes since that time. Working with Mr. Bracken, we, we came up with the, the chokers down along the short stretch, but these large traffic circles, which aren't just, aren't just stamped concrete areas at grade, they're actually raised areas. So there are areas that, that you would actually go around. So these are, these are the ways that we thought we'd address that main stretch, and then the main stretch coming in, which we, we were fearing of almost drag strip stretches. And we broke up the main grid portion by, by dogging it from the, in the middle there. So that's the only way we thought we could still get access to those lots in the back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a rationale, and I don't presume to want to design your project for you, but it's like, nice to know what thinking went into it. That's my train of thought.
Can you think of it again? Yes, Ms. Marantz?
Mr. Lee, in your presentation, you did mention that you're hoping to have this project be age-specific, in other words, being an adult community. Have you given any more thought to having any other open areas for another pool, other than just that one area? Because if you're talking about a, an adult community, that's going to be a very large part of what people are interested in, if it's strictly an adult community.
Yes. That has been taken, we're not the developers of the age-specific, and in fact, the buyer that we're looking at is, has made that comment to us. The idea is that on our previously approved tentative map, we are making that the central portion, so, because right here, we have just a simple, small building, and a, a pool, and a, and a spa, sort of specific if you didn't want to drive a long way, but we, on the other project, we are coming back with a larger plan, removing lots, making a real rec center, where we have a, I think it's almost a 13,000 or 15,000 square foot rec building. Those things have been brought up by our, our developer, who's saying, you know, we don't have enough for an active adult community. We need to have a large building, we need to have several pools, several more active activity, activities, besides just having passive activities. Originally, the marketing was for a single-family adults with kids, and so we'd have tot lots and rec areas, and that really isn't applying to that anymore. So the thinking has changed, but it's, it's on the other map, which is the larger map with, which has the larger rec area, and the idea is to focus it all around, as, like I was telling you before, as one master plan.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Caffrey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. When we looked at this in study session, I was pretty adamant about the 10 lots being behind the six lots and being opposed to that, and I still am. And in study session, I was thinking that the lower-density lots would be a good substitution, which would probably put about eight behind six. But now we've had testimony from nearby residents, which I agree with. So I believe that to satisfy me, it would have to be lined up with the property lines, six.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder how strongly the Burnett companies feel about the gate to satisfy some of Mr. Schoenberger's concerns. If you're very sure that this is going to be a adult community, would you be willing to condition your walls and gates based on that?
That is something that we are, when we, when we expected to have the flexibility previously on the other map, we had inklings of this was going to go to an active adult, but we really didn't have a specific buyer in mind. We do have a specific buyer now. We are in negotiations to close this deal with them. It is a specific request for them to have the gates as an active adult. I, I would feel confident, confident to be able to be conditioned that if this does go active adult, it would have gates, but if it didn't, then it wouldn't.
In other words, just as, if I understood your response, if it was not an adult community, you would be willing to commit that, we would not be a gated community?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Schoenberger.
Why do, what is the thinking that causes you to, or the buyer, to feel that an adult community, there's a stronger reason to have walls and gates if it's an adult community as opposed to one that's not an adult community? And, and I make that comment because you mentioned, I think, that this buyer has developed some adult communities in the Temecula area, and I've been around the Temecula area, and there are adult communities, and, and there are a number of them that don't have walls and gates. And, I mean, I feel particularly strongly about this issue, because I, I do think that one of the distinguishing factors of our community here in Palm Springs, and one that sets it apart from some of our neighboring communities, is that we do have open neighborhoods that aren't behind walls, that aren't behind gates. If you drive around our town, you get to see the community, you get a feel for it, the neighborhoods are open. And I, I just have a very strong feeling that that's an important feature of our town that I would like to see perpetuated. So I have voted a number of times for walled communities, where, because of the surrounding area and the relationship between the subject parcel and its neighbors, and the desire of the developer to go ahead and, and allow for the walls and gates. But I've always done that when I felt that there was good reason for it, and certainly, one of the good reasons is if that's what the developer wants, we certainly want to try to accommodate development and do what we can to make your job as easy as we can. But if that's the only reason, just simply the developer thinks it's better that way, and if the, the land around the project doesn't particularly lend itself to gates and walls, then, then I sort of have a philosophical problem. And the only thing I've heard you say is that this is a marketing issue, and we're thinking about an adult community here. And, and if you have a thought, why is the fact that this might be an adult, why does the fact that this might be an adult community argue then in favor of a walled and gated community as opposed to one that's not?
On the previously approved tentative map, we brought up the issue that we had a, an access and a drivability issue. And so we wanted to have the ability to have gates there, because we had significant long stretches of a long street that just continued out to nowhere, and we wanted to make sure that we didn't have anybody just wandering down those streets. Because these intersections lined up, it was our natural thought to, to get the gates on both sides, since it was going to be a master planned community, which is why I was, I was not hesitant to agree to, if I did go with a master plan and a, and a active adult, that I would have the gates. But if it wasn't, then it would be two separate projects, and I wouldn't have a problem having no gates on it. But it is a, it is a specific request from the buyer that we have, who is anticipating to develop this as a active adult project, to have the gates. They have the gates there on their project down in Temecula, and have, and have had a significant success with that project. That's where they're looking to move and build the same model out here in, in Palm Springs. So it was a specific request from them. At first, it was our request to come through, to conform with what we thought was, from a market rate, market research point of view, a positive thing to have. But since that time, it's evolved into what our, our buyer has wanted, which is, and the reason why they wanted it is for the, their, their original success on their previous project in Temecula. Because we were planning on putting the gates on the east side, we just simply wanted to match them up on the west as well, since the intersections have been lined up, treating it as one master plan.
Any further comments? Ms. Caffrey?
With respect to the gates, I was, generally, I'm in favor of John's comments, where, I'm Schoenberger's comments, that we don't like gates, where we can avoid them. I did vote, however, for gates on the other side, because of the mile-long stretch, dead-end road that went through the project. And I'm really okay with the gates if it is a adult community. I think the mature adults like a little more security, or the feeling of security, even though it may not truly be there with gates, but I think they, they assume that, and since they are lined up, I really don't have a problem with that. My only concern is the, is the density issue against the R1 lots.
Question? Mr. Matthews?
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm sensitive to the gate issue as well, in some, but, but I think we can probably deal with that when the final architecture comes back. And, and I, too, where possible, would like to line up the lot lines. So, you know, it just makes, it's consistent through a neighborhood, and that's sort of what people expect over their walls. However, we don't have a really a building plan ahead of us, and, and there may be a, that might be the place to put the recreational facility that's coming in. So I think if you can just take the comments that you've heard here, at least with these Commissioners, I, I don't want to hold up your project, so with that, or your application for the preliminary, preliminary plan development district. So with that, I'd move case 5.0889, PD 269, as submitted.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Matthews, second by Ms. Marantz. Any further discussion?
So that's leaving?
I think I would, I would like to, to add the conditions that if it is not an adult community, that the gates and walls are no longer part of the entitlement, and that some accommodation be made for those lot lines in the southwest corner. I agree with Mr. Caffrey.
You said the gates and walls, you mean just the gate, the, I mean, the wall is all the way around?
Well, yeah, well, I think that, I guess I mean gates. And that some accommodation be made for the, what is it, southwest corner, that those lot lines line up, or that there's not two houses in one person's backyard. And, and I'll make the additional comment that I think that, that I'm very happy to see you try and propose the side-loaded garages in exchange for the diminished setback. I think that's very reasonable, and it's much more attractive than looking at everybody's front-loaded garage. So I, I appreciate and applaud you adding that.
The, the, I guess the issue we have here is we have a tentative map here, and if you want to redraw the lines, you can't vote on the map. So you got an idea there? And I guess we got, also got a motion on the floor, it doesn't have a second.
No, I second.
What did you, I'm sorry. You gotta be a little louder.
Mr. Chairman? Sure, go ahead. And keep in mind, there's, there's two aspects to her proposed amendment. One is with regard to the gates, and the, if the, as an alternative, if it's not an adult community, and the second had to do with an accommodation in the southwest corner. Go ahead.
The Commission could add a condition of approval to deal with the lots. You know, as you stated, you could say that you want the lot lines to match up, so there's not two, two homes in a backyard, and you could give the, the applicant the opportunity to relocate those smaller lots, and then bring that back as part of final development plans before the final map. And, you know, they would just be performing to comply with a condition of approval at that point.
Or put a pool there. I mean, there's a lot of things they could do.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that I'm against the, I guess, I, could it just happen at the final map, and we could approve this as a preliminary map with that caveat, or no?
You could add the condition, and we could make that work at the final map.
That would satisfy me.
I don't know if it would satisfy Mr. Caffrey.
I'm okay with that.
What, what did you suggest relative to the gates? Sounds like you had a second thought there.
I, I think the Commission has to work out the gates.
Oh.
I'm hearing mixed.
Because the application.
I think what Tracy was, was saying is that would you amend your motion to say that if it is not an adult community, then there won't be gates? If it is an adult community, as the applicant is, is suggesting it is, then gates are okay.
Because it says gated, that's why I wondered, okay.
Yeah, I, I, boy, I hate these gate debates, but I, I guess I'd be comfortable with that. And, and also the, the lot line as a condition, so we can approve a tentative tract map and say, we got to move the lot line as a condition.
Yes, you can, as long as it's a condition of approval, and it's specific enough that the applicant can meet the requirement without further reviews.
Can you craft that language, if we may include that in the motion? You think you got the gist of where we're at?
Yes, that lots 44 through 53 be adjusted, whereby there not be two homes in the backyards of the joining properties in Vintage Palms. And we'll work on the final wording before it goes to council.
And then the same condition relative to, I guess, what was the word you used? I didn't want to say senior housing, but it's not exactly that.
Adult.
Adult-specific.
Adult-specific.
Active, active adult.
Boy, you guys.
Comfortable with that, Mr. Matthews?
Yeah, I'd, to move this along, I'd accept. That second one, I'm very reluctant on, but I'm trying to keep the process going here.
Ms. Marantz, are you comfortable with that?
I'll add that to my second, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, as modified. Any further discussion? Vote call, vote, please.
Ms. Conrad?
Aye.
Ms. Marantz?
Aye.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
Mr. Schoenberger?
A reluctant aye.
Mr. Caffrey?
Aye.
Mr. Klatchko?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and good luck, Mr. Lee.
Lot better than going down in flames there.
All right, the next item on the agenda for architectural approval is case 5.0845, application by John Sandborn for Accanto Partners for a one-year time extension from October 4, 2002, to October 4, 2003, for an approved preliminary plan development district and tentative tract map for 48 single-family residential lots on 25.01 acres, 1,320 feet east South Palm Canyon Drive at Accanto Drive. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this item has been on your agenda before, starting on November 27th, was continued prior to that, and it was on your agenda in October, and there were some concerns that we needed some time to work with the developer. This is an approved project, and it's a project that we're very pleased to have. It's a very nice, well-designed subdivision off of South Palm Canyon and Accanto. The project actually has received a grading permit, and they've already, already started the grading operations. The time extension and issues that we were taking a look at, there've been some, over time, some conditions in the community that have changed a little bit. We've been working with the applicant to take a look at some modification to conditions of approval, as well as adding some, some conditions from the standpoint of what's happened subsequent to the approval of the project. Excuse me one moment. We've worked through those, I believe we're all in agreement, and I'll just summarize the, the changes that we've worked on. Couple of the conditions of approval dealt with the possible payment of fees or agreements prior to final plan development district approval. We've modified that and put that tied it right back to the final map approval, which is really the operative document. There are a couple of conditions that dealt with possible payment of fees, mitigation programs, things of that nature, and the time of the payment. We've taken that from a final map to the building permit, since the mitigation measures that we're trying to accomplish, or the mitigation we're accomplishing, has to do with impacts caused by people moving into homes as opposed to the, just the subdivision. So we've made those adjustments in a couple of locations. Two conditions of approval under engineering were added. One has to do with the participation in a future bridge that the Commission has looked at. As you've looked at projects in this area, South Palm Canyon and Bogart Trail, there's a situation where we know that out of Arenas Canyon, we've got four or 5,000 CFS of uh, there's a situation where we know that out of Arenas Canyon, uh, we've got four or five thousand CFS of water. Uh, we're gonna, uh, need a bridge in that location. Uh, Dave Barakian in the engineering department is looking at, uh, filing for a grant, uh, to try to bring in some grant monies to help fund that bridge. Uh, so what we're saying is that, uh, an agreement, um, uh, to participate on a fair share basis, uh, towards the construction of the bridge. Uh, we've talked ranges of, uh, contributions in, in, in general terms with the applicant. Uh, and the applicants indicated, uh, in our, our verbal discussions that they're comfortable, uh, that that's something that would be reasonable. And then also there's a new condition that we put in that, that may be advantageous, uh, to the developer, having to do with a further evaluation of the environmental mitigation on traffic. And that's that if the applicant, uh, uh, wants to do a little more traffic study, he might be able to reduce the mitigation contribution uh, because of some adjustments in where the hotel might be in the future and things of that nature. Uh, there may be one less intersection that's needed actually, as we look at this, uh, project being refined uh, in the overall context of the specific plan. Uh, those are the, uh, the changes. Uh, it is a time extension for the tentative subdivision map and the plan development district. Uh, Mr. Chairman, will, uh, answer any questions that you might have?
Thank you, Doug. This is the first request that they've made for a time extension, is it?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions of staff before we invite the applicant to address this? If the applicant has any comments they'd like to add, this may be appropriate time, not necessary? Any comments, motions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the requested extension.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schoenberger, second by Mr. Caffrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Could I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
At design review, uh, on Monday, we looked at the final development plans, the actual homes, uh, for this project. And, uh, I think design review was quite pleased. They're very strong homes, they're, they're good size. And I, I think they were quite pleased with, uh, the progress on the final development plans.
Very good. We look forward to seeing it. Thank you. Next item for architectural approval, um, number seven, assigned program application by Reginald Hall for assigned program at the Sumter Jays Plaza located at four oh-six, four oh-eight and four-ten San Rafael Drive.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, uh, very, very small complex located off of North Palm Canyon Drive. Uh, tramway is here, San Rafael comes off here. Uh, the property is located right here. It currently, uh, just to fill in the culture on this map, there's an affordable housing project in this location uh, that comes up as a neighbor and we're currently looking at a, uh, mini-storage facility that would wrap around it. Uh, it's a very old, uh, dilapidated building. A few years ago, uh, it was a pretty significant problem in the neighborhood. Uh, a lot of code enforcement issues, things of that nature. Uh, we've worked, uh, through a grant program, uh, small business loan and really bootstrapped a series of uh, financial tools together for the, the newer property owner, uh, to come up with a very small commercial complex. Uh, it's a sign program for a couple of businesses. Uh, the prime business is Mama Olis Soul Food. Uh, they, uh, the name of the, the project is Sumter Jays Plaza. Uh, the sign program was approved by design review with one suggestion that on the main sign out here, they might want to punch up the color that it's a little bit washed out. And, uh, we recommend approval of the sign program and we've been working, as I said, for a couple of years to really turn this property around. And, uh, probably shouldn't give a plug, but it's probably gonna have pretty good food.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Evans. Any further comments? Motion, Ms. Conrad?
I move approval of the application by Reginald Hall for the sign program, um, with, subject to staff approval of the final color.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Conrad, second by Mr. Caffrey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Next item, number nine, case three point two one nine eight, application by Jim Reimuth for Bob Cornish for a architectural approval to construct forty-by-sixty square foot, or, or forty-by-sixty-foot storage building at two-three-one Oasis Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, this is the small metal industrial building that the, uh, planning commission approved a month or so ago. Uh, upon appeal to the city council, it was referred back to the planning commission. Uh, I'm pleased to report the project went back through design review. Uh, what they basically come in with is a plaster element along the front with this portion of the element out in front of the doorway in the main building so that you get some three develop, three develop, or three-dimensional depth as well as shading patterns. Uh, the plaster element, uh, wraps back around the building, uh, back behind the door. And as I think the commission recalls, the building is set back quite a distance from Oasis so that really from the angles that you see, you could probably see maybe a little bit of the metal building on the back and then it's surrounded, uh, in the back, so you can't see it from other sides. Uh, staff and design review recommend approval. Subject to conditions, and I think this takes care of the problem and the feedback I'm getting, um, unless it's changed, is that the owner, uh, seems to probably be comfortable with this change. Mr. Reimuth, the project designer is here, uh, if you have any questions or if he has any comments.
Doug, um, I'm looking at the, uh, recommendations, uh, that we received as part of the agenda from design review and the comment there was, uh, approved subject to plaster, all vertical metal surfaces except the front roll-up door. And I, I was present at the design review and that had been my recollection as opposed to just, uh, a wraparound partway on the sides. Uh, has that changed since the, uh, since the architectural review, uh, of November twenty-fifth?
Um, yes, this went back to, uh, design review on Monday with revised plans and I think what happened is they, they created the three-dimensional depth on the front of the building, pulled it back and around and, and really created a front facade. Uh, I think once design review saw the front facade and, and really took a look at the side angles a little bit more, uh, they were comfortable with the changes that you see today.
Very good, thank you. Commissioners, comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Mr. Caffrey?
I don't know how many other commissioners received a phone call from one of the council members, but I, I did. And this is less of my understanding of what they wanted. So I'm kinda stuck now in, (laugh) deciding how to go on this because, uh, we, actually, we had block going down further, did we not, originally? And, and the question to me was, why didn't we have the whole building in block all the way around? And, uh, why did I allow such a thing? So, what are we supposed to be doing here?
Well, I, I can maybe refresh, um, the commission's memory. Um, the first time this was recommended for approval by design review, they wanted the entire building wrapped in block and the planning commission said, we don't think you need to do the whole building.
Correct.
Um, I think the, the primary issue that I've heard and that I think I heard at the council level was to try and get a nice facade on the building, doesn't need to be fancy, uh, that's something other than metal and to try and get some three-dimensional depth in there. Um, I did not hear, uh, a great concern about wrapping the whole building. Uh, if this was on a corner, uh, or in a, a condition where you might be able to see the whole building, um, probably have a different concern. Uh, I'll just give you a heads up, you've got more metal buildings in this neighborhood coming to you and...
Well, I'm okay with this. I mean, I think this is a, a, a great idea for a building that's gonna be completely blocked by the neighbor buildings, but, uh, just want to make sure.
Yep.
I'll, I'll refer them to you if I get a call.
Yep, yep, you know, and, and the, you know, the commissioners, uh, you know, in the council report, I, I informed the council about the concern about the metal building and the facade and the treatment, uh, because I typically get the phone calls from the neighboring property owners. Um, I believe this is a, a much stronger street presence and I think it solves the problem.
I agree.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Schoenberger?
Um, we, we have, we have the facade, the three-dimensional facade now, which seems to perhaps, um, satisfy one of the concerns of the council. And did I hear you say that, (laugh) disappeared, (laugh) you pushed the wrong button. All of a sudden, disappear from view. Uh, yeah. Uh, i- i- is the front facade now stucco?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then the roll-up doors tucked back in the recess.
So, so, maybe you can tell the, uh, the council, we were, we were a little bit skittish about sending this, this back to them and we're not, we're not trying to diss them. Uh, we, we, we thought that, uh, this was, was what, uh, uh, you know, that this, this met, uh, we believed this met what, what their goal was. So we're sending it back to them with the, uh, 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 thinking that this would, would, would meet their, uh, uh, approval. And we're not, we're not trying to rub their nose in it.
Well, it's, it's not going back to the council unless it's appealed again.
Okay. Oh, I see, all right.
Yes. You know, so I, I'm, I'm reasonably comfortable that this met, meets the council's expectation.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I was at design review on Monday, but I don't remember them showing us a, um, color board, did they? They showed us a material, a, a color board for this stucco? I don't think they did.
Don't remember.
Just, just for the record, what is the color? Cause I don't remember seeing.
Did you under the same understanding that I had?
I'm sorry, I, um, yes, Ms. Reimuth?
Uh, the, uh, the color of the building is, is, uh, the manufacturer's color, cinnamon beige, uh, which is, uh, somewhat of a brownish-bejish-greenish type color. Uh, and we've, we've gone ahead and used that color throughout, um, on our plaster. Uh, the, the gate, the gate is a different color. It's, it's more of a yellow color. I don't have any of these color names or color swatches with me. Uh, the block on the garden wall is to match the, uh, existing block on the seat, on the, uh, water agency, um, wall existing. So we're, we're all pretty well coordinated with all that stuff. Does that help?
I'll, I'll move approval of case number three point two one nine eight for, to construct a forty-by-sixty-foot storage building.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Conrad, second by Ms. Morantz. I think we've talked about it plenty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. And just, uh, my recollection is the appeal didn't come from the applicant. The appeal, the prior one, did come from the council, so we'll see where it goes. Next item miscellaneous, number ten, uh, case three point two one five eight, application by Homus Ramey for time extension for the restoration and renovation of the Spanish Inn. Condition number six, granted the applicant six months from the date of approval for the renovation, uh, June twenty-six, two thousand two, to complete all improvements. The condition noted that the time extension may be granted as long as the applicant is diligently pursuing completion. Spanish Inn is located at six forty North Indian Canyon. Staff report, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, on this one, we do recommend a continuance to January eighth, uh, next year. Uh, we'll, we'll correct that date in a minute. And, uh, you know, what we're doing is we're trying to work through a program where there's a better understanding of the timing of improvements. Uh, the project has gone relatively slow and, uh, we've been asked to try to come up with a scheduling program that might move this project a little bit quicker. Uh, we do recommend a continuance. Uh, that completes our report. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. The chair will entertain a motion to continue this matter to January eighth, two thousand three.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Morantz, second by Mr. Caffrey. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously. Number eleven, commission work programs. Mr. Evans?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I don't have any specific reports. Uh, we are going to have a study session and I believe we reported this to you at your last meeting. I think it's January fifteenth, which is the, uh, the odd, uh, day of the month for us to meet because of the new year. Uh, we are going to start our presentations on section fourteen. So in order for us to have a discussion on section fourteen, uh, one planning commissioner needs to be here. Uh, then we have to draw, uh, straws and, uh, so it's real important if we're gonna have that discussion that Commissioner Conrad attend that meeting. Uh, we've discovered that the balance of the commission has conflicts, uh, because of the size of area that's affected by the section fourteen master plan. Once we draw straws, then the, uh, other three commissioners will participate all the way through. That completes our report on work program. Mr. Chairman?
Very good. And while we're talking about that, it's, it might be an appropriate time to mention that we do have our special meeting next, uh, Tuesday, the seventeenth and that for the same process, we need attendance.
As, as I told you before you set the meeting on the seventeenth, I am an elected board member of Desert Healthcare District and that's our meeting and I have to be at it. Coincidentally, on the, no, I can't. It's our annual meeting, election of officers and it's, there's a lot of critical issues, so...
We, we've considered that contingency and because Mr. Matthews has a conflict on that project, his, uh, absence, um, will not cause a problem. It's Commissioners Klatchko, um, Grants and Conrad that, that must be here or we cannot have the meeting.
Okay. And then to add, insult the injury, on the fifteenth of January, I'll be out of the state, so take that into your formula.
As long as you don't take Commissioner Conrad with you, we're okay. Well, there's no pressure, as you've noticed.
All right, item number twelve, uh, city council actions.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, last week, we had, uh, one item that went to, uh, city council. It was the little, small, four-unit, uh, housing project up on North Indian Canyon. Uh, was very well received by the, uh, city council and was, was approved unanimously. And I'll just make a comment. I think when that project's built, we're gonna have activity in that entire neighborhood, uh, quick to follow. We're starting to see some interest pop up and it's been kind of a quiet neighborhood. It's really one of those sleepers. Um, it's a neighborhood that a lot of people have kind of passed over for many years and I think that day's about over. Uh, so we should see some real nice reinvestment and I think that project sets a great tone, uh, for the expectations of the neighborhood. Um, other council action items, the, uh, city council is going to review the skate park, uh, portion of the swim center project tonight, uh, because it is two projects, they just happen to be linked by the site. Uh, we'll be going over the plans, the specifications, the timing and the budget, um, on that particular project. Uh, the council will also be discussing the Plaza Mercado parking. Uh, there is a, an agreement with the city that the Plaza Mercado parking lot, uh, half of those spaces upon request are allocated to the Mercado building and they have exercised that provision in the agreement. So half of the parking spaces in the Mercado in the evenings will likely be, uh, reserved for the restaurants and the businesses at the Mercado. Um, it's the same, predominantly the same people parking in that area, uh, today, so what we're gonna do is just shift, um, a little bit of, of how the parking is managed on-site. And they'll probably do some valet on busy nights and they'll probably actually be able to, uh, add a number of parking spaces in that area. That's a long-term agreement that has a lot of history to it. So, instead of just implementing that, which we probably could have, uh, we're gonna brief the city council and the community on it this evening. So when they see new signs go up and things of that nature, they're, they're gonna understand, or at least have the opportunity to understand why half of that parking lot, uh, will have, uh, a reserve status, uh, for specific businesses after five P.M. Uh, the, the owner could have requested twenty-four hours a day and chose not to. Um, the other item is the, uh, council's discussion of the, uh, reconfigurations over at the airport uh, having to do with the loop road, the east-west roadway, uh, on the airport master plan, as well as the actual improvements. Uh, when the city council had their meeting on the Mesquite Avenue, uh, issue, as you well know, there were some concerns. Um, I think that, uh, our engineering section is doing a very, very good job on addressing most of the concerns. of the concerns we heard at Mesquite. Tonight, they're going to focus primarily on the airport because we're actually in design of those improvements and we either need to take a different direction or continue with the design. So they're going to discuss that. It's really an important issue with the airport because of the FAA funding cycle. We either need to move forward or change directions very quickly. So the Airport Director will be handling that. That completes our updates on what the City Council has been doing. Mr. Chairman?
Very good, thank you. Staff reports, comments, requests. Commission first, yes, Ms. Morantz.
Mr. Evans, just kind of for the record, I'd like to know what the status is on the Estrella Inn as far as what has been done or what is hopefully still going to be done. Noticing in the desert sunlit yesterday that they are one of the bed and breakfasts on this tour and what's happening as far as their application is concerned for, what, and what have they applied for that has already, or has anything they've applied for already been done?
The, Alex has, has actually been the one that's gone out. He went out right after the meeting. They do have permits to work on the kitchen area in their small bar facility and they're continuing to work on that. They have done some other items on-site. I haven't gotten the full report back from Alex. They're not building any new buildings. They're do, you know, predominantly doing the work that they had permits for, with the exception of the other. If the Commission would like a more detailed report, we'll, we'll give you that in writing prior to your next meeting. But Alex went out the same day that the Commissioners brought this up. We have been dealing with some ownership changes at the Estrella Inn relative to scheduling meetings. We've committed to having a meeting with the neighborhood before we proceed with the, the rest of the, the action item before the Commission. We've put the Estrella Inn on notice that they're not going to get an occupancy permit for their bar until they resolve their, their matters with the Planning Commission and the neighborhood. So we're, we're taking action. I just don't have the detailed update on, I believe at the last meeting, there was concern about a fountain being removed. Alex went out immediately and the things he could see that night, the structural things they were doing, he felt they were all the permitted items. I didn't see anything surprising. I was concerned they might be doing a conference room or something like that.
That was my question, was about that meeting room or that conference room because I was under the impression that that was part of their application.
That was not approved, so, you know, they were not approved to go forward with that until we conclude the Commission's action on that one and, you know, we've been trying very hard to get the meeting scheduled and with the, the management change, it's been hard to, you know, get everybody up to speed, to set up a meeting, to meet with the neighborhood before we can come back to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So we've got some homework to do and I will give you a more detailed update on, on things that occurred on-site that were not permit-related.
Schomburg?
Mr. Chairman, I, I thought I'd give a quick report on this development task, task force that I've been involved in. I think we've had four meetings now and there's another meeting next week. The, we have reviewed the building department and I, just a little bit more background, this was a, a task force that has been sort of done under the auspices of the Palm Springs Economic Development Corporation and, and involved in it have been Chris Mills, one of our City Councilmen, and also Jeannie Reller Spurgeon. David Reddy has attended the sessions. His assistant Troy Bootsloff has attended the meetings. And then there have been a number of contractors and people from the community. Mike Fontana's been a regular attendee and others. And the discussions have been focused on what improvements, for example, might be made to the building department and what are some of the problems that people have encountered with the building department in getting their plans checked and getting their projects inspected. We went through a meeting where the same kind of discussion occurred relative to the engineering department and there were a number of criticisms voiced and, and suggestions made. There now, next Monday, the focus will be on planning. So I expect that the planning department will be reviewed as well as the Planning Commission and the process that we have with design review and so on. And it should be, make for an interesting meeting. At the same time that this is going on, the city has hired a consultant to review the entire planning and building and engineering, all departments and, and with the idea that that person will come up with some recommendations as well with regard to possibly policy and process and, and that out of all of that, these meetings and the consultant will come some recommendations. And they're on a very fast track. They want to complete the work of this task force by January and come up with a report and some recommendations, which I suppose ultimately will go to the City Council. So it's been kind of an interesting experience for me. I've learned a lot about the building department, the engineering department that I didn't know before. And hopefully out of this will come some suggestions to improve the process. The, the whole effort was, was driven by sort of this vague dissatisfaction that we've heard for a number of years with regard to our community being less than, than friendly to, to developers who want to come in and people want to do business here, which you can view in different ways, but at least that, that, that was sort of the impetus to create this task force and hopefully that some good will come of it.
Very good, thanks for the report. One item that you mentioned had to do with design review and I know that's one issue that we as a Commission with staff has been working on for over two years, almost three years, is perhaps you can give us a stat, update on that? Is, is that process waiting on the task force that John has attended to, to see if there's anything to be added before final, before we have a final proposal?
Yes, before we craft an ordinance and move it through the hearing process, the city manager's intent was to brief this group on the changes to the design review ordinance, architectural approval ordinance. You know, it's, it's the basis of a lot of what we do relative to the qualitative review of projects as well as the, the minimum application requirements. So once we get some feedback that there's, there's consensus and concurrence that that's the way to go, we'll craft a revised ordinance, get that back to a workshop and end the hearing process fairly quickly. I've, I've drafted, this will be my third or fourth design review ordinance. I just need to know where I'm going before I draft another one and it doesn't take very long. It's pretty straightforward. There's not, not a whole lot of, of hard work in crafting the basis of the ordinance, getting your feedback, then we'll kick it out for the city attorney's review for actual final wording and get that through the hearing process. The, you know, we've, we've been working, just to give the, the Commission an update, all of the staff members have been working with the consultant this week. He's here every day, all day. We're bringing him into meetings that are regular and routine. He has full access to all three departments and he participated by watching most of the Planning Commission meeting today. He was in the audience and, you know, we're, we're making sure that we look at the system top to bottom, side to side and, you know, we, it's, it's really a very refreshing perspective to have somebody come in and take a look at something that's fairly routine for a lot of us and take a, a different perspective look at it. So I would suspect we'll see some, some recommendations that would affect, you know, some of the things that the Planning Commission does, some of our codes and ordinances and a lot of that is going to need the Planning Commission's input on, you know, what direction we take. He's got a very short timeframe to do an awful lot of work and, you know, the idea is for him to make a report back in, in a matter of weeks, so it's not something that's going to be long-term. Commitment to this group going in was it was going to be time-sensitive to everybody's schedules and bring this back fairly quick, so I would suspect the consultant will have a report in January.
Very good. I know this Commissioner and I'm sure the rest of the Commission would like to reach some resolution of this as well. Anything further from the Commission? Staff, any further comments?
The second regular meeting in December, which would fall on, on Christmas, we're, you know, I, I think we're able to probably work around it relative to most of our customers. Though if we, if we do run into a problem, you know, we'll give you a call, but right now it does not look like we'll need to have a meeting and with your, your schedules, it's, it's our understanding we'd probably end up with lack of a quorum anyway because of how it falls in that week. So we're working around that, we're letting people know and if we have to load up a little bit in January, we'll, we'll do that and we'll keep you posted.
Very good. Nothing further then, meeting adjourned, thank you. Oh, is there one additional item?
Yeah, one, one quick item. I passed out a letter from the Palm Springs Mall having to do with just getting some information out to you. We are working with the mall on a revision to their sign program. They, they wanted to just let you know what they're doing with us. We're trying to come up with a, what we think is a good strategy to help some of the businesses and some of the quieter portions of the mall and it's a much more scaled back project than some of the Commissioners may have remembered a few years ago where we looked at a request for up to 45 signs. But that will come forward as a sign program sometime probably in January.
Very good. Meeting is adjourned, thank you.